This is a call to order for the June 10, 2024 City Canal Winchester Planning and Zoning Meeting. Mr. Wildenthaler, roll call, please.
Mr. Wildenthaler, present. Mr. Donahue.
Here.
Ms. Gooden.
Present.
Ms. McDonald.
Here.
Mr. Paulsgrove.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, I move we excuse Mr. Ritchie and Mr. Dietz.
Second.
Time in seven o'clock. Roll call.
Mr. Wildenthaler, yes. Mr. Donahue.
Yes.
Ms. Gooden.
Yes.
Ms. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Paulsgrove.
Yes.
Now I'll need approval of minutes for our April 8 meeting. There was no meeting in May, so no meeting minutes to approve for May. We need April's meeting minutes approved.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the April 8 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Paulsgrove, second by Mr. Wildenthaler. Roll call, please.
Mr. Wildenthaler, yes. Mr. Donahue.
Yes.
Ms. Gooden.
Yes.
Ms. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Paulsgrove.
Yes.
Now it's time for public comment for items that are not on our agenda. So if there's anybody here from the public that wishes to speak this evening about items that are not on the agenda, all right. If you'll be speaking with us tonight, if you're able, please stand and raise your right hand and take an oath, so if there's any chance you'll talk to the commission this evening. Do you swear to be truthful in the testimony you give and tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? If so, please say I do. Thank you. And I'll turn it over to staff for our first application.
The first application on tonight's agenda is zoning map amendment 24-002. The address of the subject's property is the 23.67 acre parcel located on the east side of Bowen Road, parcel ID 184-000939. The request is to rezone this property from low-density residential to limited manufacturing. This subject property, again, is on the east side of Bowen Road, approximately 1,000 feet north of US 33. Properties to the north, south, and west consist of large lot, single-family homes on Bowen Road, zoned R3. Properties to the east consist of a recent expansion of the Canal Point Industrial Commerce Park, zoned limited manufacturing, and a large 89 acre agricultural farm in Violet Township. And that's the uncolored portion of the map here. The request, again, is to rezone this parcel to limited manufacturing, to be continued to the Canal Point Industry and Commerce Park at Bowen Road. The conceptual site plan that we'll show in a couple of slides here show an extension of Robinette Way on the south side of the site with two speculative buildings on the north side of Bush Ditch. Up on the screen is a current context of the subject property. This 23.6 acre parcel is currently vacant. Previously had an agricultural livestock facility located on the kind of northeast corner of the parcel. That has since been demolished, and the property owner has done grading to the site to kind of grade the site down to Bush Ditch here. That was kind of a part of a project for their last expansion of Robinette Way just to the east. Just for context of the site and the regional surroundings, Daly Road here on the right, Bowen Road here on the left, connected with Bucy Road. The property owners recently did these two buildings here, which was an extension of Robinette Way. This is the old Evans Farm site. This is the old agricultural livestock facility here. The applicant did construct Robinette Way to the termination of this red line. With this application, they're requesting to develop this parcel outlined in red, and they're also showing as part of that development, they would like to extend Robinette Way to connect to Bowen Road. With the application here, the easier to read version of this is including your printed packet. The applicant has proposed a zoning request that is compatible with adjacent land use. The zoning and comprehensive plans. The site borders existing Canal Point Industry and Commerce Park. It was contemplated for future industrial growth in both the CDA, Canal Winchester Violet Township Land Use Growth Document and the adopted community plan 2023. Both planning documents show the impact of the physical separation of the community by US 33 and positions that perceived obstacle as an advantage was selective land use designated for large employment center opportunities. This rezoning request supports those long-range efforts. Both those documents. The change in the land use from residential to manufacturing does provide a greater economic health, public safety, prosperity, and general welfare for the general community. The application does here note that there are plans to extend Robinette Way to Bowen Road as part of a future project with development on this parcel. This east-west connector connects Daly Road to Bowen Road. That is also supported in the 2021 Canal Winchester Thoroughfare Plan and the 2023 Community Plan and the CDA land use development plans for connectivity throughout this corridor and this industrial park. The traffic analysis for this rezoning was in the digital packet. I didn't feel like printing all 200 some pages for you all this evening, but that is currently being reviewed by Canal Winchester's city engineer. It's being reviewed by ODOT, and it's being reviewed by Madison Township for the traffic impacts to the 33 intersection, Robinette Way to Bowen Road, and then the Bowen and Bucy intersection to the north. In terms of the site plan shown on the screen, the rezoning application requires that the applicant submits a site plan for kind of a concept of how the property would lay out. The applicant is showing here two speculative industrial buildings that are kind of splitting this parcel of automobile traffic and parking would be located on the Bowen Road side while the semi-truck traffic in this concept plan is shown to the rear. This site plan does show an access point located splitting the buildings. It is lined up with what is contemplated in the thoroughfare plan as another regional connector road that could go all the way to Winchester Pike. The second access point here is directing the truck traffic directly to Robinette Way. Again, the idea behind putting this kind of site plan together in the rezoning application is to give both Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council an idea of what that rezoning efforts would do for the development of the property. This property does have access to sanitary sewer. There is a lift station that is just off of the current end of Robinette Way that was constructed two years ago. It was sized to serve this parcel. Water service is available along Bowen Road with an existing 12-inch water main. And then stormwater is shown on the schematic plan to be handled with the tension that drains into Bush Ditch, which is located just between this last building here and then the Robinette Way extension. As noted, the 2023 Community Plan has a feature land use map. That land use map, again, I kind of touched on it, talks about how to use the 33 divide to the community and how to use that positively to separate high-impact uses. That plan does show this whole corridor from Daly Road to the cemetery. All property is currently in the city limits to be largely rezoned to an industrial-type use. When you look at the 2021 thoroughfare plan, there are a number of documents that kind of show these connections, but this one showed a couple of different alternatives within here, so I thought this was a good one to show how Robinette Way could connect through to Bowen Road. Prior to the applicant's last project, it showed Icon Street that is just south of Daly Medical Center, kind of having a similar termination point. Again, one that could go the same east-west direction to hit the cemetery this way here, and then also another long-range plan of having Bucy Road follow the current corporation limits to hit Winchester Pike. Again, just trying to bridge that interconnectivity within the community for more pathways rather than having to hit 33 to get to another destination. A little bit older of a document, but still valid nonetheless, the 2005 CDA land use plan is the land use plan that had the most kind of graphics in it. This site, I've kind of boxed in black here. It is shown to be planned for industrial growth. This shows the hash is what's in Franklin County, and then this kind of swath right here is, from what I could tell, best represented with the Bush Ditch separation of the parcel, kind of showing kind of what that connectivity does for kind of green waste development throughout the corridor. So after reviewing the criteria for zoning change from R3 to limited manufacturing, with it being supported in not only the CDA land use plan, community plan, and thoroughfare plan, among others, it does meet the criteria outlined in our code. So staff is recommending the rezoning of the 23.67 acre parcel, PID 184-000939, from low-density residential to limited manufacturing, be recommended to City Council for adoption.
Questions, comments for staff? And I would note that Mr. Dietz arrived at 7:02 PM as the application started for the minutes, so Mr. Dietz is present.
Thank you. Now I can ask a question?
Sure. Go ahead.
That's right. I think when questions, we'll wait till after we get some more inputs.
Okay.
And then Chairman, whenever you think is most appropriate, the applicant also has a presentation they would like to make to you as well.
Since this is a public hearing, why don't you come on up and we'll can make your presentation. And I would just ask that keep it specific to this application, since we're likely to hear a lot of this again at a future date. So just in terms of what your proposed land use is and a little bit about the traffic study, would be great for us to hear this evening.
Andrew, I have a clicker for you. Good evening. I'm Andrew Caravan. I'm a development manager with Multo Properties. I guess I didn't realize how comprehensive the staff report was, so try to keep anything that's duplicative out. We're requesting the amendment to the zoning from low-density residential to limited manufacturing. On the picture you'll see in the attached, this is Building B of our Phase 1 project, and in the back, that shows the site for what we're calling our Phase 2 of the project. Real quick, just a little bit about Multo Properties. We're an industrial developer based out of Chicago, focused exclusively on industrial, cover pre-main geographies, which is California, Texas, and the Midwest. Within the Midwest, we really are focused on Chicago, Columbus, Nashville, Louisville, Cincinnati, and Indianapolis. We have done projects in Columbus before. We've done two projects so far that total about a million square feet. And one was in Obets, and the other one is this, Phase 1 of this project, which was about 825,000 square feet. So we have pretty good experience in the area, have had a great time working in Canal. You know, we work with users, clients, tenants, very large to pretty small. At the bottom, I've included some logos of different companies we work with. At least within the Midwest, we've done projects with FedEx, Ferguson, Ford, Mercedes-Benz, The Phase 1 project that we did, it is complete. We've started up the lease-up process. The big building, Building A, which is that cross dock, 450,000 square feet, we have leased that, leased to a global 3PL. Not really supposed to say who it is at this point, but you guys will know soon, whenever they kind of announce it. The experience that we've had with that project has kind of given us a good idea of, you know, those tenants that want to be here, why they want to be in Canal, why it makes sense for them from, you know, labor and location and everything. So we really like this location. Also, you know, has given us some experience working in Canal, I think. Being a company that operates in a lot of municipalities, a lot of them say they're business-friendly, and I think in this case with Canal, it's actually true that you're business-friendly and, you know, want to attract, you know, users here. I think, you know, working with Andrew and Lucas on getting that 3PL here, it was pretty impactful to have their, you know, bind to help try to bring them to the community. The main reason we really think that it makes sense to do this project in terms of the rezon part of it is the market demand for these smaller spaces. Right now, we've got two pretty big buildings. They've been performing well, but the smaller blocks of space is really where the tenant demand is. You know, historically, the southwest or the Rickenbacker Submarket has kind of been main-to-main in terms of where users want to locate, and, you know, that canal kind of falls into that geography where people want to be. But with how the other projects in the market have leased up, there's really not anything in the way of smaller blocks of space that can serve these types of tenants. The smallest space that is available for lease in Canal for new Class A product is about 374,000 square feet. So we think it makes a lot of sense to bring some of these smaller-sized spaces to the market. We do track the, you know, requirements that are out of the market searching for space, send out RFPs to building owners, and right now of the nine RFPs that we're tracking, there's about eight or so that all fall into the 100,000 square foot and under space. So that really is the most active segment of the market. You know, within Canal, I think there have been two really good case studies of people developing smaller format buildings. Both those were done by Tenbee. They developed a building on Winchester Pike. It's about 170,000 square feet. They leased it to Walgreens, a well-known retailer, as well as J.J. Haynes, who is a flooring distributor, and then Exclusive Brands, who is a Canadian candy company. Then they also did a second building up Daly and Bussy, which that's now fully leased. They did a lease with Rite Aid, they did a lease with Moby Dick 3PL, who is a locally-owned 3PL, and then they recently signed a deal with Mainland Metals, who is a steel supplier. So these smaller buildings have done a really good job of attracting like a diverse group of tenants to the project, or to the projects, and generally are good corporate occupiers that bring, you know, jobs and tax revenue. Some other key statistics that we want to highlight would be the current vacancy rate for these smaller format buildings right now. If you look at spaces 100,000 square feet and under, you're about 1.3% vacant. And relative to the market, the overall market for all sizes is about 6.9%. So clearly that is the tightest segment of the market. It's about all again in the market. You kind of touched on the overall aerial future land use plan. Just wanted to reiterate, the, you know, industrial campus-type use is exactly what is shown in the recently approved Canal Winchester 2023 Community Plan, as well as the properties further west and to the south. So I just wanted to reiterate that that is in conformance with what we're showing there, what was shown there. On the next page, we're showing a zoomed-in version of the overall park plan in red. We've highlighted the two new proposed buildings that are just west of our current Phase 1 project. As you touched on, the expectation would be a further continuance of the offsite utility extensions, as well as the connection of Robinette Way from its current terminus to Bowen Road. Of course, the expectation would be that that is privately funded, you know, of public utilities, public roadway. And as I touched on, the market overview, we really think that the two-building format makes the most sense, given the current market demand for these smaller format buildings. And then on the next page, we've just included the same site plan that you previously saw. You know, these smaller footprint buildings will have all of the amenities that users are looking for in terms of, you know, ample auto-parking for high employee counts. They'll be high image, really look good, I think. One of the things that really stands out about our first phase is that the buildings are, you know, architecturally interesting. I think our team puts a lot of time, money, effort into trying to design a building that looks good, you know, whether it's different architectural features, or pre-cast reveals, or extra glass, or an interesting paint scheme. We try to, you know, build a building that is, that looks good, because, you know, some of these big buildings can start to look a little monotonous, boring, kind of all look the same. So we do try to make a building that stands out a little bit. And then, of course, you know, there's just, there's really limited supply, so this is the site plan that we think really has the most marketability. And then this is the final slide here. I think we've kind of touched on all of the benefits of the project, but just wanted to reiterate them kind of in one place. The ability to continue to attract corporate occupiers and users is really dictated by the space that's available to them, and allowing us to rezone this parcel will give us the ability to, while we lease up the remainder of the Phase 1 project, we can put this second phase on the market to lease for potential build-to-suit opportunities. And when you're marketing the sites, it's really hard to credibly pursue something like that if you don't have the proper zoning, such as kind of the first step for us to continue to do that. Once we do get that other project leased up, the expectation would be, if we haven't, you know, done a build-to-suit on this, then we would go spec with it. But that's, we still have some leasing left to do there. The, after the recent leasing that has been done locally in Canal, especially those two Tenbee buildings, there's not much available, so we're just trying to put some more, you know, vital product out there so that the city can continue to attract, retain, and allow the existing user base of tenants to do business here. And of course, the reason we, I would expect the community wants these occupiers is to continue to bring the jobs and tax revenue associated with those transactions. And then finally, there's going to be, you know, some significant public infrastructure put in as part of this project, i.e. the extension of the road and the extension of those utilities from where they are to the new subject property. I'll open up the questions and comments from other people, but if there's anything on the traffic study, we did bring some of the people from Kimmerhorn, who are more intimately involved with that aspect of the project.
Thank you. Questions, comments for the applicant?
So I guess I'll just start off, and yes, your building, the building you just did is architecturally very pleasing, and the landscaping package was, I think, pretty good as well. We've had a lot of feedback from the community, and I would say that was part of those being built, and I, I don't know, haven't had much since then, but those look distinctively different. So I look forward to having this, continuing this on Bowen Road, mostly, yeah, Bowen, mostly because we're starting to butt up against some single-family homes. And I really would rather head that off instead of, you know, have the, yeah, have the pitchforks when, when we go to move forward with this. But, so to that extent, I guess just maybe more buffering, I think, would be great, maybe where the pond placement is. I think the more distance you can put between the adjoining lands and the facility would probably be better received.
Okay.
Yeah, we can certainly consider it.
I know. It's a site development, it's not now.
It's actually a function of, you know, we generally want to put the detention at the lowest point of the site, but
Got it.
It's certainly something we can look at.
And then just, maybe this is combo staff for this, but where the, where the main drive entrance aligned with the street across, I don't know if that's a named street or not. You mentioned it as a future connector, it's not, it's just a, some
And driveway.
Because on the, on the, the other end, that doesn't align to the street either, and if you didn't do the dog leg with Robinette, you could align that as well. So I didn't know if that was, you know, a long-term road connector or not, on the south side, or whichever.
The idea behind it is to try to keep it a little bit of distance between that and the creek, and so you've got
I know.
Bush Ditch that runs across there.
A little bit of jog in there, yeah.
So it's trying to, to kind of get that as far south as possible. Because if you, if you go out there, the grade does, does change significantly there adjacent to the Bush Ditch.
Is any of that floodplain?
Yes.
Yeah, you can kind of see the approximate floodway, and floodplain is shown in these kind of dash lines. As part of any site development plan, the actual limitations of that would have to be studied, and that's partially why the buildings are pushed so far north, is to keep some of those environmental impacts from affecting future site plans. And that is also part of the reason why Robinette Way is on the south side of the site, to keep it basically as far away from the impacting of the natural features that are there.
Is, is the homeowner to the west, is that a single homeowner from that loop road that you see on the map?
This one, or this one?
Where the, yeah, no, not, not the little loop, but there's that other road. If it were, if Robinette were to go to straight, it would hit that other
Right. Yeah, there, there are two parcel owners that basically own that loop road that goes back.
I'm just, I'm just sensing there'll be some kind of road offset there that will become an issue at some point, so I just try to be sensitive while we're chatting about it now.
Yeah, this, this right here lines up, so this property owner has a really wide parcel that actually flares out to make it look like a future public roadway connection. This will, access drive leads to a very large parcel, so this connector here was suggested by staff to be located here, because it was kind of much further south to, to try to create future alignments.
Sure.
This one is really a function of where the current ditch limits are, and trying to get that road as south as possible. But this, this access drive to the north is close to something that could be a future roadway.
Yeah, I mean, that'd make a lot of sense. There's just one on the south. I put the alignment with the resident across the street and the other, so enough said.
Yeah, there's a, there's a box culvert that's right in this area that really limits where you can kind of position Robinette Way further to the north.
I would, my only comment, and this, this can come later in the site development plan, but this is, because we're talking about Robinette Way and the extension right now, is that, you know, that the consideration of forcing or demanding truck traffic to go back east on Robinette Way to Daly versus coming here onto Bowen Road, because I know there's talks of future connectors and improvements, but that's the future. And the reality is, is we would have another mess that we have at Bixby and 33 now, with trucks trying to navigate turns off of and on to 33. And I realize you can only make a right off here, coming westbound to Bowen Road, but if a truck is leaving Robinette Way and heading south on Bowen, and then attempting to turn right in the current way, 33 is there, there's no right acceleration lane or, or even a right turn lane, that that could become an issue down the road.
Yeah.
And while I think the connection of Robinette Way to, to Bowen Road is good planning, and, you know, it makes sense, and this land use all fits the area, I just think we should consider, when we're talking about, you know, roadways and access points and things like that, the impact that, that just having a road there connecting to Bowen Road, which can house a car or a truck, and the impacts that that could lead to down the road, as the site's developed, before there's improvements made to 33. And I can assure you, that'll come up in the site development plan and probably with City Council as well. So those are the things I think that are important to the stakeholders in the community when we look at these types of projects. And I didn't see anything about, you know, it looks like the traffic study has, it looks like the, the population of cars and trucks would be minimal to the current existing infrastructure, but my only concern is trucks, big trucks turning out onto, to 33 on a consistent basis. I don't think there's any issue with a truck coming from the Lancaster area, turning right onto Bowen Road, no problem. But when you get trucks coming out by Speedway there and attempting to turn right on a very busy stretch of road, that could become a, a traffic issue down the road, until improvements are made.
That is something that ODOT is evaluating and does evaluate as part of their evaluation of the traffic study. of the traffic study, is, you know, obviously, the slow-moving vehicles, and if there's need for an acceleration lane, you know, they have looked at that in the past. ODOT had that in their plans. So there were plans to put acceleration lanes on each side, on the north side of 33 and the south side of 33. And so that may be something that they'd want to see accelerated with this project.
And Robinette Way would not be extended until this site development plan is studied and approved. Is that accurate?
Yeah, we plan to do it along with the construction of the building.
Yeah, okay. That's my only comment.
I have a quick question. I was not on the planning commission when the first two buildings were done. Are these warehouses, or are they actually manufacturing businesses that you're looking at?
Well, they were completed on a speculative basis, so
Okay.
They could accommodate both uses, but typically, it's going to be warehousing, distribution-type uses that are most attractive to these buildings.
Okay, thank you.
And I would say, well done on the presentation and the sources and the research. I appreciate the, the stats being extremely recent and relevant in terms of what you proposed tonight, so. And again, I, I agree, it's a good use of, of the land and extension of the current industrial park, much to what you guys developed a couple of years back, so.
Sure, glad, glad you like it.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I just want to say I'm glad to hear that at least the building one is leased, so that we don't have too many spec buildings sitting there empty, so.
Yep, we are just as glad.
Sure, sure.
Any other further questions for the applicant or anybody that they have with them this evening regarding the traffic study or anything?
You brought up my point. I almost think a excel, decel lane would be required, just, I mean, I watch cars slow down to get off there where Speedway is, and that's, you know, they're, can stop a lot faster and quicker with large semis. I mean, that, that road's already congested at certain points in time of day, it's just begging for more accidents, so.
And it's a natural right turn to get to 270 from there.
Sure.
Yeah. Fully agree.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So this is a zoning map amendment change and request, so there is a public hearing, so I will now open it up for comments from the public. Time limit is three minutes. If there's anybody here from the public that would like to speak, sir, please come up, sign in, state your name, and we'll start the timer on the screen. When you begin speaking, again, you have three minutes, and I'll kindly interrupt you when you have a few seconds left.
My name is Chuck Smith. I've lived here for 38 years. Dan Evans owned the farm. I worked with him, ran my horse training operation there. And, you know, I, Dan and I were best friends, and, and I loved that property, but when the opportunity, the need came to sell that, and I had purchased the property, I had an opportunity to work with several different developers, ended up settling with these guys. And I've got to tell you, they're first class. They've done a great job. I'm very happy with the buildings. That was one of my concerns when we did this. I didn't want to see apartments and things go in that area. I thought this would be a real asset to the continued development of the community. And worked with Lucas and Andrew a little bit on this stuff, so I just want to tell you, I, I live on the other side of the road, there on Bowen Road. That's probably going to dump right into my driveway on the end, and I'm good with it. So I think progress is coming, and I'm pro with continuing to work with these guys. That's all I got.
Thank you. Excellent. Anybody else from the public who wishes to speak?
Seeing no other members of the public coming before us, I would make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
A motion to close the public hearing by Ms. McDonald, second by Mr. Wildenthaler. Mr. Deeds, roll call, please. Mr. Wildenthaler?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. Gooden?
Yes.
Ms. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Deeds, yes? Mr. Pausgros?
Yes.
So this would be a motion to recommend to city council for adoption.
I'll make the motion that we approve ZM 24-002 and, and make the recommendation to city council.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. McDonald, second by Mr. Wildenthaler. Any further discussion? Roll call. Mr. Wildenthaler?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. Gooden?
Yes.
Ms. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Deeds?
Yes.
Mr. Pausgros?
Yes.
So ZM 24-002 has been recommended to city council for adoption.
In terms of old and new business, the Ohio Health Project has broke ground. They plan on doing some concrete footings and slab work either late this week or early next week. That project, I believe, is slated for 13-month construction time schedule.
End of July 25 is what they're
July 25. That was close, it's 13 months.
Yeah.
The Columbus Metropolitan Library has a grading permit issued. They want to start work next week on doing some site work. They are working through their final approvals on civil engineering, and they've also started some building permit review process. They want to break ground here with building construction at late this month, so I think they're going to be trying to move full speed ahead. I don't really have a whole lot for other kind of old business. I'm working with a couple of different prospective projects for future rezoning requests. We'll see if any of those kind of trickle through, through the end of this year. Any questions from the commission?
Yes, so Mr. Moore, an old business, or new business last month, we talked about Del Taco, and they were going through the civil engineering. Is that still moving forward?
So they have their civil engineering approved. They are working with a franchisee change, someone else to start that project, but the ownership has everything kind of ready to go. So if you know anybody that wants to open up a Del Taco, they have a site ready to go.
And then the
You're retired.
The boarded up car wash at BP, any further action from the city to the landowner regarding that?
Yeah, I've had a couple of conversations with the demolition contractor. They are, I'm working on demoing, I believe, 16 of car washes for BP, this site being one of them. They are trying to find the utility connections to the building, where they're at, that way they can cap, cap us off and safely secure those before they knock the building down. So that's, the project's a little harder for them than some of the other sites, from what I'm told, because this site is, predates kind of digital plans and don't have any paper plans for private utilities. So they are having to do some due diligence before they can get that remediated.
Sorry, last one. Anything further from Home Depot in regards to the storage that we heard back in the winter months?
So I have not heard from Home Depot's attorney since they last met at this meeting. However, today I did get an email from a civil engineer asking for copies of site plans and landscape plans for that site. So I, assuming that's related to any future kind of expansion plans for storage, but the email I got was very generic. So I'm hoping progress is being made on that as well.
Thank you.
What about Hartmans that still have cars parked on the driveway and on the sidewalk?
I've been having more conversations with city administrator and the mayor. I believe the mayor is going to be visiting with the, the manager staff over there and trying to work out a solution on how to best approach kind of their growing demand for service and also the kind of old-town context for where they're located. So that is still ongoing.
Thanks.
How about a couple of older ones? If you remember the, the gentleman that had the five acres and the barn out on Jender Road?
Mm-hmm.
Has, has, I just have, I haven't seen any progress. I figured by this time he would have broken ground. He was in very, seemed like he was in a bit of a hurry.
Yeah, him and his contractor have parted ways, and so he is working on finding a new contractor to do that project. He never filed any kind of building permit plans through my office, and then the variance process is valid for the life of the property, so he's not in any rush for that sort of expiration. But he also has other issues with the property he's trying to deal with as well, so he's fighting fires.
Got it. How about, how about a crazy question? Sorry, I thought you guys leave by now. So I travel Robinette and Dove a bit more frequently these days, and there's a stop sign at Robinette on the Dove, and there's dead end on the other side. Is there, do we just not allow yield signs? Or is it just forced to have it just pop a stop sign in? And it's made me look around in the city as I, as I drive around more, it's like, there's sometimes we could use yield signs instead of stop signs, it's just
Yeah, we can have the service director look at it and see if it's, I think the intent was that Dove Parkway would be extended in the future, so it's a stop sign.
Right.
But I agree, there's probably
Question is, do you stand?
Yield may be more appropriate.
Depends who's there. Cool.
All right.
Can I move with you, Charlie?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Wildenthaler, second by Mr. Paul Gru. Roll call. Mr. Wildenthaler?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. Gooden?
Yes.
Ms. McDonald?
No, I'm kidding. Yes.
Timeout, 7:41 PM.